We're convening into our public session. And I'd like to welcome everybody who is here tonight, attendants, and those who are streaming this or watching the livestream now, or to those who will watch it later on, welcome to you as well. And we are going to have our pledges. Mrs. Ruck.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Dr. Sconzo, do we have any commendations and recognitions?
We do have a really, I think, very special commendation this evening, but before we do that, real pleased to introduce tonight's inspiring moment. Because when it goes to the podium, tonight's inspiring moment is about our first UMLIS Leadership Academy. Really thanks to the generosity of some amazing community members, our education foundation, really the hard work of Dr. Price, Ms. Hayhurst, Ms. Rolle, Ms. Yelkom, and Mr. Kramer. The UMLIS Leadership Academy began this year and graduated its first class just a couple of weeks ago. So, Witta, if you were able to, we're very, very proud to be in the office.
UMLIS has been involved with, if you think about leadership opportunities, we have some that have been launched. We have some who have gone through crisis educational program, A+ Challenge, some who have come to Harvard where we're at.
All great programs, we're all speaking to UMLIS. And so, we had the company that started talking about, they wanted to get back, they wanted to district it up, so how can we make that happen in the future? So, we started talking about what we're doing, we're offering, how we can do better.
To have, to have your own personalized leadership study in the district. I think that takes leadership from being theoretical and in the books to, here's what really happened.
Well, I've got three kids coming through UMLIS. I've got two that are done, and I've got a sophomore, just finished his sophomore year. And I thought, maybe I might be able to contribute something. And so, I got to know the material on there, and the education foundation, and she and I talked about the mission they had here with the district, and seemed like a good fit, so I said, I'll contribute. And we went and came.
I picked the leadership academy because I saw it as an opportunity for me to grow personally. I've entered a lot of different professional development, I know a lot of things that are in the curriculum, but not so much with just leadership.
This was something different because recently in the competition, I was in Uproh in science, so Uproh in education development. And this was an opportunity to grow in just leadership with and part with the UMLIS.
The uniqueness of the academy would be that it wasn't just educators, it was across the district, it was business office, relationship, whatever, because leadership was leadership.
Teachers from instructional coaches, from assistant principals, associate principals, and coordinators, and people that are in community development, are in, it's just all of it online, widespread, and there were district level administrators, classroom teachers, campus administrators, that we could all come together, share experiences. What is it?
First portion of the academy was all about personal reflection. It was about things that you do and how you interact with people and assumptions that you make.
As we went through each of these skills, we managed to say, I remember that at one point, I knew all of these skills, but you tend to forget just the hustle and hustle of working and trying to meet their lives and trying to meet goals, that it is important to recognize differences, it is important to not isolate people, it's important to test assumptions. I think coming into this program, we had a lot of life on our shoulders, and we were eager to us in a whole different perspective, and made me really think about my thinking and think about how those relationships.
The peer group was an amazing component of the entire process, both in the fall semester and we had different peer groups in this fall semester. And it was a wonderful way to get to learn professionals within, I know, one regularly, and may not have been able to communicate in one round that a lot.
You know, I grew very close to my peer group. We became the rock for each other. We were able to share issues that we have at work in a very non-threatening environment, a very safe environment.
During the second half of the academy, the one thing that I really valued was the book study with the superintendents. I became very comfortable around them for the simple fact that they have all been where we are, or whenever you start to think in their some way along their journey to where they are now. So, having their perspective and, you know, their guidance and experiences, I think that was really, it really was the next step to this academy.
It is so reassuring to know that we have this support of our community. Obviously, we would have had this experience with now our educational foundation and our school board, our donors, the assistant superintendents, everyone did an amazing job creating this experience for us.
But our job is to, is to support, our job is to, is to push each and every one of those people to, to do better, to want more for the end.
We are very proud of the program and look forward to it growing on a going-forward basis. I do want to introduce you to some of the stars of tonight's video who are here this evening, maybe three of them now, along with the first graduates of the UMLIS Leadership Academy. First, we have Maholi, academic lead teacher at UMLIS School. The director of advanced academics, Tempe Smith. As you can see, the middle school assistant principal, Steve Stanky. For this program, I'll dump him in the dog, Dr. Tommy Price. Great work, thank you all very much. I'm going to ask Teri and Mydary to come to the podium to introduce tonight's commendation, but I do want to make a comment as she makes her way there. Just a few weeks ago, literally lives were changed, and they were changed thanks to the generosity of someone who has long been very supportive of our district and our campuses, and most importantly, our kids, and I'm speaking of Randall Reed, the owner of Planet Ford. Randall did it again a few weeks ago in a very, very big way. And Jerry, if you don't illustrate how big, I will, and you'll finish, because it just blows me away, how generous Randall is. But that event, that activity did change lives. And Terry, if you'd be kind enough to introduce it this evening, Mr. President, if you will join me up front.
Sure. You're allowed to, I'm going to show a few pictures valid as I'm talking. So, tonight, we are recognizing the outstanding support that Randall Reed and the Planet Ford team has provided to students at UMLIS. Planet Ford has been a longtime supporter of UMLIS in a multitude of ways, supporting education programs in our classrooms, such as giving a book to every third grader at the course elementary, electronic marquee at UMLIS Middle School, supporting Project Grab, their drive one events, a brand new Ford car for our district teacher of the year, and the list goes on and on. And this past November, Mr. Reed extended that list even further by agreeing to take students from the Kingwood Park High School Best Buddies Program to Disney World. So, how this happened was in November, Mr. Reed was informed that he would be the recipient of the prestigious Salute to Dealer Award. Ford Motor Company wanted to send a video crew down to interview him. Mr. Reed was a big fan of the Best Buddies Program and saw this as an opportunity to create awareness about this program. So, he asked if he could videotape the Kingwood Park High School talking to the students. In the case of if you aren't aware of Best Buddies, it is an international organization dedicated to creating opportunities for one-to-one friendships and a great employment and leadership development for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Although the process of having this video was supposed to be about him, his accomplishments, once again, he made it about the students. After the students told him about their dreams to go to Disney World, he told them that he would make this happen for them and their buddies. And not only would he just provide the money for them to go, he and his family would also go with them and share the joy of this experience. So, in June, as you can see, 49 students and 12 chaperones were flown from Houston to Orlando, Florida, and spent five incredible days at Disney World. As you can see from the pictures, it was truly a magical time for everyone, including Randall Reed, his family, and his amazing assistant, Kristy Williams. Kristy and her team spent hundreds of hours planning every little detail for this trip, even down to providing very unique care packages for each child as they arrived at Disney World. Private dinners were planned with themed characters, and Mr. Reed even gave each student $100 to purchase souvenirs. Everything was thought up there in the smallest detail. Overall, over $157,000 was spent to make this dream become true for our students. So, here tonight, tonight just recognizes one incredible act of charity, but to convey our heartfelt gratitude for years of charity that our students and teachers have received from Planet Ford. Our community is stronger because of Mr. Reed and Ms. Williams, and we are honored to call them friends. So, tonight, the UMLIS School Board trustees are presenting a commendation to Randall Reed and the Planet Ford team for their outstanding support of UMLIS students. Accepting this commendation on Mr. Reed's behalf is Randall's right-hand woman and the hardest-working assistant I know, Ms. Williams.
So, trustees, Mr. President, I want to embellish just for another minute. First of all, I want to underscore that alone was $157,000 donation for our kids, our very special kids. And when I mentioned that it changed lives, and Kristy doesn't know if I shared this story, but she was kind enough to share it with me. One of our special lead students who was on the trip, autistic student, doesn't react well to anyone touching him. He never hugged his mother, just cannot have anyone touch him. During one of the dinners, when Mickey Mouse appeared, he approached Mickey Mouse, and he hugged Mickey, Mickey Mouse. Gives me the chills even thinking of him. And after he hugged Mickey Mouse, he went over to his mom, and he hugged his mom for the first time in their lives. So, when I said it changed lives, it literally changed lives. And Kristy, thank you, and thank Randall so much, and all of them. Okay, that'll do it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Sconzo. And thanks to Kristy, and to all of you guys, and Mr. Reed, and everything you guys do for our district, and we all are very much appreciative of that, words can't really express it. So, let's, we're going to move into, before we do, I'd just like to recognize one of our elected officials in the audience, Mr. Norman Funterberg from the city of Houston.
I'm thinking Martin, I'm thinking Martin.
That's the same size.
Yeah, there you go.
He's new at this job.
That's my rookie mistake, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we, Mr. Funterberg, don't believe we have any questions, no questions, Floyd. No questions, Floyd. All right, so we'll go into board comments, and Mr. Ryan Arrie, you can start.
It's the Kristy Show, that's all I'm going to say, is thank you, Kristy. If you're not Facebook friends with anybody, you should be Facebook friends with Kristy, because that's a, that's a fun week, just knowing what your life is like. I really enjoyed watching yours and Randall's, Randall's a great point as well, so it was really a fun week to watch you guys, and thank you so much. Welcome to, Dr. Brown, I wasn't here to vote on you, so it's nice to have you here. I know you're from Oklahoma, I'm from Nebraska, so if I talk too fast, just I may lose control. That's my first of many Oklahoma-Nebraska jobs. Wonderful to have you here, too. That's it, Mr. President.
I'll just echo Kristy and Randall, the one thing I said at the last meeting was the single most impactful experience my first year on the board was experiencing all five, actually, all six high school graduations. And while this district does a lot of neat things for kids, the impact it has in the community, what we've shown tonight in certain ranks up there is what I would consider probably one of the all-time greats, so thank you for that, making that possible. And I hope this will really help.
Once again, I've known Kristy a long time. Matter of fact, she was one of the ones that jumped on my landwagon the first time I had the land for the school. So, because of your involvement, I'm sure this program is better for us, so thank you so much. Mr. Funterberg, thank you for coming in to see what's going on, because you know, one of my passions is how we can make sure that the city and the school district work, continue to work together, so thank you for being here. The folks who were in the first leadership class, I apologize, I didn't get to make it to the awards ceremony, I was there for the kickoff, the celebration way back many months ago, so I just follow y'all through the year. That's, that's a fantastic program, and I'm glad y'all were able to get through it, and you can do better for it. And last but not least, Coach Kite, I'm glad you could find the board room, we haven't seen you in several months. There's always been an excuse or a reason for you not to be here, but trust me when I say that Ms. Bobstrom, she took care of everything for you while you were not here. So, again, better life than never, though, as my esteemed colleague pointed out, again, you had to wait till you had to see. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Sidon. Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kristy, I just want to say, once again, we do appreciate you so much for all, for all you've done for our district, and really for my family, because I think we've got every car. But anyway, say thanks to Randall, awesome, we really appreciate it. I just want to share with the boys, especially after we're on TV and they made fun of me, that my wife will probably see this, that 30, 40 years ago, on July 7th, I met him, we got married, three years afterwards, so I have an anniversary coming up, so y'all pray for him.
For you.
Yeah, like it's like, I get the right gift, so. So, anyway, and I'm happy about that, so, yeah, we're getting, we're getting ready, so I've been planning and moving in wait, so. Got six guys, so Angela, I'm looking to you for some, you know. So, but anyway, the Sorbers, Apollos, and Dr. Brown, I want to say, welcome aboard, glad to have you, and to my brother, you know, my brother from Mexico, glad to have you too. Mr. President, glad to.
Ms. Conrad.
Well, we're the same, welcome, and thank you for being here, also, thank you, Kristy, we did enjoy following everything during the week while you were on, I really loved the program at Kingwood Park, our best buddy program, to try to see that initial opportunities and providing that, as well, some of the, from the UMLIS Kingwood Park, we should know as well, great opportunity for us to send that to graduates, our leadership academy. Congratulations to you, better president, and those that are around as well, and Dr. Price, and everyone who made that possible. It's been necessary to have this for a while, it's great. If you want to go over there, hopefully we'll retain those people, and just make our district much better.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad, and I have no additional comments, so everything is covered well. Congratulations to our graduates, and welcome to our newest administrative leaders. We have a long and happy marriage here, it's a great place, and we get to see it from one perspective, but we know you guys are going to hit the ground running and help us continue where we're headed, and that's ongoing and after. So, thank you all. Ms. Conrad, are there any items at a closed session? Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Sconzo, I'm sorry, you just said you were in the line, and you even told me that, so, there we go. Thank you, Mr. President.
So, I just want to first officially introduce our new assistant superintendent for support services, Dr. Roger Graham, Roger from Eastham. And I just, the only thing I want to mention, and I want to thank Mr. Cunningham for prompting me to do so, because I kind of forget that this kid's video had been shown, but Mr. Cunningham's going to be good, because as of yesterday, we celebrated our 40th wedding anniversary, so there is a day after 40. Happy anniversary, my friend.
Thank you. Miss Ash, I should have rolled my screen ahead and shown, that was my problem, I thought I already remembered we had one more piece there, but obviously not. Now, we will move to our complementarian, and is there any items to go on?
Mr. Price, as to the personnel, I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented.
Mr. Sidon, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six, zero. And Ms. Conrad, are there minutes that we can?
As to the minutes, I move that the board approve the minutes for the special board workshop held on June 3rd, 2014.
Mr. Rush. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six, zero.
Mr. President, as to the minutes, I move that the board approve the regular board meeting held on June 10th, 2014.
Seven. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six, zero.
As to the minutes, I move that board approve minutes for the special board meeting held on June 24th, 2014.
Discussion? Sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Sidon. Any discussion? And all those in favor? Abstentions? Dr. Sconzo?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I thank you, trustees, for supporting our personnel recommendations this evening, very, very excited to welcome to the family our new principal of Summer Creek High School, Mr. Noah Cora.
All right, next, we'll move through our updates on your associations and committees, and we'll start with White Committee, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. President. committee has no report, we will be getting together very soon, it seems like it, for Mr. Enoaghi, and sit down and move forward with the recommendation of the committee for the next school year.
All right, we skipped over the superintendent's direction, Mr. President's is out today. Building planning.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, we had a meeting for the first time in three months, a couple weeks ago, great meeting, and pretty much standard stuff, a lot of discussion of man and building, a lot of summertime maintenance and repairs, and we're really looking forward to, I think, our next meeting, I think, until August, to kind of hit the ground running a little bit, but as you know, there's a lot to be built in the next few years, so we'll have a lot to discuss, I'm sure, so looking forward to it. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. President. Chairman, yes, when your summer project, probably, we aren't, we haven't completed yet. In fact, I asked Kenny, are there going to be some that will roll over in two school years, and he said, yes, there always are, but nothing major, so I think, any of the things you guys remember him saying, pretty much standard stuff, lots of stuff, but.
Thank you. Finance Committee, we have no report for this meeting. Next, our new committee, technology data governance committee, Ms. Conrad.
Yes, sir, we had our very first meeting on the 24th, we discussed some several projects that are going on to help give us everything in the next four years, lots on that list, and we talked about the importance of integration between technology and administration development. We discussed some implementations in some of our systems and their compatibility, some anti-race counteract, updating of our target use policy, like some innovative planning to allow for bring your own bodies, which will be some. And we are continuing to collect open technology resources to help the state make decisions going forward for some of the effects of the change of all the first, what is next to this, so that's kind of a little bit, that's last weekend, then the attorney, that we probably need a month, so again, chatting about when we need the time to do, and getting us some great data points, so we'll decide the meeting next month, we'll be starting later.
Thank you. Next is legislated committee, Mr. Ruck.
Yes, our initial meeting with Dr. Sconzo, sort of start outlining our plan to pack it into the 15th session. Some unique, I think, opportunities for us as we, as we start to work, reached out to the committee members, and we're looking to have our first meeting mid to later August in order to prep for what we anticipate to be the first district legislative committee meeting with the community sometime October, November, so we'll start planning for that, and of course, we'll be ready to start educating.
No easy task, and I'm going to stick with it.
Advertising and marketing have not had our first meeting yet, I anticipate that will happen first part of August. Requested some initial data by Dr. Sconzo in terms of revenue impact over the last two years, he sent that to me, so I'm currently reviewing that, and then we will give the committee there in August to do that data, and begin making some decisions on that.
Thank you. Mr. Sidon, superintendent's direction.
Yeah, we've, we never could come to a common date for the entire board to get with the consultants we've been using for the audits, so our committee is going to meet right now, and we're scheduled for the 17th of this month, to go over some of the, some of the audits, and look at the three-year plans of the eight target programs that we have right now, and hopefully, when that's over, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Price, we'll be able to get some of that information to the rest of the board, you know, for information on the plans and so forth. But still, before, before the next term starts, we'd love to be able to get all of us together in the workshop with the, with the three auditors, consultants that have been looking at all our programs, so that is, I think, is very important, we can get that done before school starts, but, you know, we couldn't wait any longer, so we're going forward with the three-year plans and so forth until we meet again. So, the 17th, we'll have more information.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes the committee update portion of our meeting, and now, we're going to move into our consent agenda. Ms. Conrad, would you, you go along with me here? Ms. Conrad, would you, if you'd a long as being here and check off every... First item under learning reports, considerations and purchases. Item A, your local agreement for Eduforia's school objects, wear premium suite. Hold that first. Okay, that's a poll. Okay, next, we go to governance reports and considerations. Item A, proposed revisions to policy EIC local. That's a consent. And next, I mean, the same area, discipline management, number B, discipline management plan, student code conduct for 2014, 2015. That's a poll. Next is item C, report, TASB policy update. That's information, I'm sorry, that's right. Next is D... So, next, we move to financial services reports, considerations, purchases, and the action item is tax refund. That's a consent. And our next action item, also in finance, is waiver of P and I. That's consent. Next is item D, employee benefits program. I'm sorry. Excuse me, I actually put these on. Item C, budgetary amendments. I do know the options. That's a consent. Now, item D, employee benefits program. Okay, that's consent. Next, we move down to support services reports, consideration and purchases, and we have an action item, number A. Delivered healthy pizza program. Mr. Englotti and Mr. Sidney want to pull that one. Okay, and that's it. So, we can go back through that. And, Conrad, I think you could put that into motion for us.
Mr. President, as to the consent agenda, I move that the board approved twelve items by consent, under governance, item A, under finance services, items A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Okay, I have motion and a second. All those in favor? Six, zero. Okay. Excuse me, we're going to move back to items that we have, we have two items, three that we've got to close, but we're going to go back and go through the... Our first, the administration, governance reports and considerations, we have one information item, TASB policy update 99, that the board passed this month. Yes. The... Oh, you want to go, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, you want to go... This one I did with you, so we'll go through whether it's a discussion or just information for the U.I. that you have or... Okay, that's fine. And that makes perfect sense. That's, that's good. I'll give you the button for... Maybe. No, no, because that makes sense the way your committee suggests. We're in the back to learning reports, consideration, purchases, and we did have an item on consent agenda that was called. And Mr. Sidney, we pulled that, so I'll just start the review for discussion.
Second.
We get a second. Motion, we get a motion.
Motion. Second.
Okay. You know, we've talked about this a few times, about rolling out Eduforia and the number of modules that are in the suite. We're continuing to spend money. I want to, just want to make sure that we have the professional development in place to make this thing work, because when we voted on this about three years ago, or two years ago, whatever it was, this is a fantastic program if you get all the modules working. And, you know, I'm all 100% behind it. I think the money is well spent, excuse me, if we're training our staff to use it properly. And this particular suite has, or this particular, yeah, suite has several modules within it, if I'm not mistaken, about four different modules, that go into professional development, go into data recovery, some different things of that nature. And I want to make sure that we have everything in place, that we're not just, just going to redo this general breaking and setup show. That's just my comments.
And we're on the same page, Mr. Sidney. We're not rolling it out until the professional development is in place and is, is happening. And I would applaud Dr. Klesch for being very methodical about that. So, the intent is to continue to purchase this annually and to roll out professional development prior to implementation of the various modules as this school year progresses.
That's all I think. No, I have a question. Great point. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion before I move to that? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Six, zero. Okay, now, we got another item under governance considerations that was pulled, individual discussion, and that's business management plan, student code conduct for 2013, 15. I think, Mr. Conrad, under the proportion of the polls, and we do have a region that has a motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Russian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really wanted to give you this opportunity, given that I have a good opportunity in the regular business meeting, which is also watching people conduct. As a opportunity to learn how we really influence this, things such as harassment, things that occur in schools, it's like positive, I'm sure, so I know how they might be influenced. And so, we want to look at that in the department, all the laws that you're trying to apply there are, so I want to make sure that you are gathering the right data, that it's possible snow, whether the policy is effective or not, what are the trends to become and how it's working, and about changes in, you know, and the way those recommendations are. So, it's something I'd like to kind of reflect on that. And when I look through the information that I have, you hear a lot in the, in reading articles and books and in the media about harassment and social tolerance and things like that. And when we look on, as a parent, I can all look on the website for information. I know there's something posted on each side about bullying, that's required, we posted it. When I follow the links, I definitely get a really great picture of all the zero tolerance districts, and what does that mean, and is that the same for every district? So, but as I began to explore more, I realized that we do have things in place that allow our administration to have some leeway in terms of making some judgment about where this comes in and the allegations that we make. And in terms of allegations that are made, how many instances is there where punishment occurred? And we're also busy places that are happy to be proactive in responding to situations, even if they're not punishable. So, I've learned that, but I didn't know if everyone had learned that all that is happening. I was, I was happy to know that, that stigma and social tolerance doesn't really apply to us in terms of, so one size fits all for our district. I just want to make sure. You can tell me, I told you that in a better way, but I really felt like I could speak to that in a manner to make up concerns in terms of, especially if I was to need things that others are, yes, and things such as...
Yeah, Ms. Conrad, I agree with everything you said, but I also want to make sure that not only are we being fair, because every situation is different, but we still have to be consistent, because one of the things that irritates me is a work is when a parent calls and their student, their child was maybe was treated one way, and then a month later, similar situation, and that student was treated, that'd be a little different. So, on one hand, every situation is a little different, and we never get 100% of the facts. There's always gray area, but as long as our administrators are being fair and consistent, I think is the key to this. So, with our policies, they have to be, they have to take out as much gray area as possible, but still give them that individuality, that leeway for the, the one in the trenches to make those decisions. But if they're not, if they're not strong enough, then they're left out there by themselves, and there's not a lot we can do to help them. So, but by and large, I agree with you, just that everything makes sense.
So, I guess, can you put it in a way, a question for Dr. Sconzo? We look at this, this policy for adoption today, really minor changes of any in terms of the real content. It's mostly kind of structural, where it lays out in terms of formats, match, some TASB stuff. So, in your, in your opinion, is it, I mean, is it a consistent, fair policy that allows us appropriate flexibility, but also out on steps to make sure we are reducing appropriate harassment and things like that?
Based on our experiences past, I would say, a couple of our comments, Mr. Russian, yes. It does serve, it does serve us and administration as, as we need. The play is extremely well taken, that Mr. Sidney made, as far as we, we need to provide candidates and administrators with enough framework and enough clarity so that their reference points and the actions they need to take are, are pretty well spelled out. However, I really want to thank Ms. Conrad for her comments, because the reality is there are no two light situations, and there are no two light people. And people includes kids. So, we have to give administrators the flexibility and allow them the opportunity to exercise some professional judgment to take all kinds of factors into consideration before rendering a disciplinary decision. So, the policy helps us, helps us to define what the expectations are for behavior, helps to define what the consequences are for misbehavior, but allows enough leeway within all of that so that individuals in individual situations are not involved. And indeed, it's not a one-size-fits-all.
And I just, Dr. Sconzo, I did, and to reiterate what some of my colleagues have said too, is that it has to be consistent within campus, as well as across the district. And we have to strive for that. And I know we've had discussions before, but we also have to make sure that it's aligned in the sense of, just because somebody accuses or says something does not make it true. And we have to go to every length to give the benefit of that review to both sides, and that it cannot be, or even be perceived as one side. And I don't believe it is, but that's, that's going to be what we strive for too, and hopefully the policy allows them. And Mr. Sidney says it does have to, and you also said it has to have some expression there too, because it can't be so black and white, they're going to move, as you said, situations are very different, Ms. Conrad said that. I think we all just want to feel that we're doing anything we can to protect our staff of students, particular students, but that both sides have those protections at all times, and that we don't jump to a decision in short, so. And I hope, and I apologize to my colleagues for that information being to you late, but I think it was a really good information, then, of three questions that Ms. Conrad had, which she had forwarded to me and he kind of went through the chain. And appreciate Dr. Price, it got to them late, and so it wasn't that they, you had to feed, but I think the information we got, Ms. Appleby, Dr. Norman, were starting to track this information for, so we'll start to see some history over time, and also the information that he gave in terms of us being proactive in some of the things we're doing, of his picture, and how they're leading charge there. Because that's really important. We want to really try to do as quickly as we can to eliminate it. So, I think you guys are doing a great job. We just want to make sure that it's really has that heightened awareness of who we are that has, I'll stop there. And if there's any other discussion, maybe if not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor? Six, zero. Okay, and governance and reports, we'll continue now with the other report. Item C, TASB policy update 99, that was provided to board this month. Any information, Dr. Sconzo?
Yes, we have an intent to bring this back to the board for consideration and action at the August regular business meeting. If at any time between now and then, trustees have any questions or, or give an input, where local policies are concerned, we would be very happy to receive those.
And everybody did receive something, and again, apologize for that, but this is an information item, so we do have another one. But I asked Dr. Sconzo and Ms. Feldman to provide us with, just a short narrative on some of the local policies that we'll be looking to approve that come through TASB, not the legal ones, but because those are the ones we have choice. And I think she gave us some good information on those local policies and why, why we need to consider to improve those and how they might fit and maybe tweak. So, it hopefully gives our review a little bit of a platform. If you have any questions and want to give a few graphs, the wise and interesting answers. And I asked Ms. Feldman, she is my follower, that we do these updates periodically as they come through TASB, that she would, she would do that for us upfront on the local policies that we need to look at the following month, as the information I am looking at next month. So, I think it would be very helpful, and appreciate you taking an extra effort. Okay, the next we have is the proposed, the lowest revisions to policy EHB local.
Again, this is being brought in for information tonight. We'll bring it back in August for your consideration and action at that time and changes to this policy, what we have to do, our response to the recommendations from our district technical program.
Dr. Sconzo, I just have one question on that. Were these sent in the volume of the GT parenting, if that's still in existence or not, sure.
I don't know that, that the same parent committee, you and I know, are still in existence, but I do know that parent, GT parents were part of the audit process. They were not a part of for the regular base change.
And next, before we end, yes, I shall say that, that is part of the items that will be discussed on the 17th, not in our committee, so we'll have more information for the items by, along with the question to give the votes, any names. Thank you. Okay, the last item in the governance reports and considerations is a quarter information item for this, this month, is the proposed, proposed revisions to policy C local, CH1.1 CB local, which had to do with expenditures.
These, again, will bring me back to the, in our consideration and action, but these three policy changes, like, in my estimation, are substantial policy changes. They've gone through, I would describe it as, as rigorous review by our finance committee as well as our general counsel, as well as outside legal... They've gone through, I would describe it as, as rigorous review by the finance committee, as well as our general counsel, as well as outside legal counsel, who was asked for a review on the Texas procurement. So, very, very extensive review, substantial changes, but we believe, we believe that with the finance committee, these are the kinds of changes that, that will serve the district best in terms of furthering efficiency of general operations and furthering board oversight.
Yes, sir. I've got one, one question, and Dr. Sponzo, you're, you're right, and I'm on the finance committee. I need to ask Ms. Feldman a question concerning CH local, of the contract signature, figures two or three. And look if you have a superintendent.
I'm trying to tell you something.
Yeah, we saw the master of the bureau getting people to watch. Yeah, 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 I get it, man. So guys, a bit, you know, it's not. No, it's not about us. But I, I guess because, you know, we do have, we do have a chief of medical officer. Should we not, or perhaps maybe deputy superintendent? I'm just asking from a legal standpoint, if we're not, should we have a third added in there?
Right, or it could be the superintendent's designate.
Oh, definitely, okay.
We language, but that designate language is included. Earlier in the policy, the superintendent's designate, that would be helpful in that if the CFO and superintendent aren't available, he could designate somebody to have a helpful.
Okay, and then just for a couple of.
So we can adjust that, right? Could we adjust that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know what comes still going.
And I'll, I'll, let me just also just comment that a lot of effort went into it. And the finance committee, Mr. Sidney, Mr. Pittman, me, and myself were involved over a period of months. This is very, and we've come away with, like I say, are in support of the policies that you know forward as before them to consider for approval next month. For the X work, the debt has our standard approval as well. We, we spent lots and lots of time, and I know lots of effort in my staff and Dr. Sponzo, so I think we have good policies there. Okay, and the last, what we have before, before we pass our last inquiry, that is, financial, financial considerations is the tax collection report. And I just have to say, this, this is a pretty, pretty awesome number. This 100, we have rolled out once again, 98.5%. Thank you for that. Is there any comments? All right, so now we can move to, I believe I'm right this time. We move down to our last action item, a goal on the sports services. I don't know if this is an oxymoron or what, but deliver healthy pizza. So we'll do that. And I can pull a poll. But we have a second, and Mr. Sidney, you want to refer to a poll first?
Well, I, I just want to, as a follower of two daughters in this school district, I want you to know, Mr. President, how good and safe I feel because effective today, July the 1st, the USDA smart snack regulations are in place. I just feel better, I just, I really do, and I really don't, but I do. All by one tray delivered into 350 calories, which is encouraging. 400 medium range of sodium, 35% calories from fat, 10% calories from saturated fat, and 10% weight from sugar. So, I say all that tongue in cheek because I, I just cannot stand if our government tells us as a board and as a district what we should do. That's something we should be able to handle. And the fact that, and I'd like to note, how much, how much, how big is that piece of pizza? A piece of pizza, if you read the, a cheese pizza is 250 calories. That one is 297. I just go with it. How, why are they picking that particular amount? Do you have any idea?
I could ask you.
You might want to send me on myself. I'll go, and you want to go to the question.
But matter of fact, my tax records are.
You want to keep it?
I don't know, it just went straight into speed though, to see this each time we turn around and to know the regulations. Just my little hands, thank you.
Well, I pulled this because as you can tell, I haven't been eating healthy pizza, and I don't know what a healthy pizza is. Uh, you know, but I too have kids at school and, you know, we voted to, to no longer have chicken leg, no longer have pizza. I was the devil. And so now I can go back and say, we now have pizza again. And they have spinach on it or something. I have no idea, but anyway, it's good to be able to tell people that we're all having pizza. And it's no meat pizza as well. I know there's a, there's a, there's a case about to get the federal government out of our school lunch programs and all that. And we're fixing to take a wild and healthy piece of that to our students. Chairman, I hope people realize that they have, they have the votes, I guess in this particular area they rule. And they, they make it pretty abundantly clear that you're not going to see money unless you follow their, their healthy, that's right. Looking out of hope and children.
So it's a question, you have to be careful. Even though she tells you, you need to use a farm to get that bread fried.
I also don't know the answer to that question, but that's true. Next time you want to go on more of that.
He doesn't mean he dropped it down.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, and last, if we'll just wrap up here. Any, which of our business, are there any items that anyone would like to place on our, talking a lot as we, on the call?
Would you discuss technology, of course? You, I know you wanted to make that an important piece, and we've been talking about it on a global basis. Organic technology, you didn't go first, and then, then, I want to say, reports.
Yeah, well, the plan is, Ms. Conrad, I have to turn to you. Last time I didn't allow you, so that's what I said, we just.
I thought you had a full report from the technology department, kind of a continuation of our breakfast with the world type thing.
And one of the things that we did discuss at our committee, Mr. Rush, and Ms. Hunter, and Mr. Calvert, and, and Mr. Allen, Mr. Allen was, as we move forward, Dr. Price is also one of the administrative committee members, talking about that three-year plan and when that is going to get to the board. And that, that happened, and not too distant future, because we won't achieve everything, obviously, but the push is that we, that's going to be the blueprint. Like we're going to be, we're going to have that thing. So hopefully it'll be a blueprint and milestones, and then we'll be able to monitor and watch it and see where we need to change direction. And then there's another facet of this whole process. Speak to that.
So I just want to take you around. So you're asking, is that about that, sort of, maybe, would you like to see that's what their end of technology plan is? Do they do that?
I would. It's a workshop, almost a workshop, or just that extended report.
I agree, it's a workshop, it's pretty neat, and the guys are going to have a lot of input and questions. That's probably a few months down the road.
I would, I would say that to kind of bridge the gap here, that's a lot of what we're reporting about, which really betting all this stuff, it's taking some time. Because it seems like every time we turn over one block, we've got to turn over three more. But now we're at the point where now we can start bringing stuff back to the rest of the board. So with technology, with all the new stuff happening, I could see that same type thing happening. True, pretty much has to go. You know, just, I think what we're looking for is, is just a change of course along the way.
Thank you.
Ms. Conrad, if you're comfortable, we'll be able to comment on it.
Mr. President, yeah, Mr. President, and I don't know, really, because I heard Mr. Rush talking about the revenue impact. And I'd like to, you from your committee, Dr. Sponzo, or from us, I even took our new Mr. Allen, his father. Where are we, where are rentals? And, you know, the city, some of Crete and at Jack Fields, I hear we're losing those, those numbers. And they feel within the contract, the amounts. So, and after, I know it's kind of, we don't know. I see why you were making that policy, you know, that probably was written, so. So we're talking about revenue impact, so, you know, that's not something that's come up, but that's, yeah. So what's going on with that? And we could, we'll put that on, let's see where we're at. Because I do know, I do know that he was taking, moves have, company were gone, but his company was, company was, uh.
Who's his owner?
It was a church, it's over at a camp that was named Chris. Oh, White House. So thank you, Mr. President. Uh, White House, and I think over at Jack Fields is actually being used as a children's church, it being by a camp. Okay, so.
What was you saying? So you're saying that's a part of the common idea from the advertising?
Revenue impact, he gets revenue. So that's, that's, I think that's a little different. I think for me, it's, I don't feel any change. But I know, I know, I said that, you know, you said, I'm saying all the committee, I think it's the only one we're building a plan that's going to be on the policy. Are you still on building a plan? Yes. Okay. But that's on China. It's not that we were advertising, but all the football and all this, all the policies, yeah.
And I, and honestly, if I, and I'm afraid I'm just not certain of that yet, but, but eventually we had every intention of reconvening the our facilities rentals committee to review rate structure. And we can add revenue impairing overtime to all work. And then I think we'll go back to, we'll go back to the building planning committee. Just coming in. But, and really the rentals, for the most part, they're pretty much month to month. I know that there are some instances of year-long rentals, but I think I believe you are fine.
Any comments on that? Any other items that you guys want to add? Okay, and we're ready to drink. Before we do, I just want to thank my four colleagues for accelerating this meeting day. As you know, we're going to leave it further than due morning, be on the second Tuesday. So I appreciate you accommodating me, because personally, I'm, my family connects me. So I thank all of you for doing that.
I mean, for your Germanist, we'll be praying for you. If you don't know, he's going to have some surgery and, and we expect.
Saccharic acid.
Better than what? I feel a spirit and a feeling that probably I'll be walking straight after, but we'll be praying for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Dr. Sponzo, I do appreciate it. And with that, we'll drink. I hope I see you in August.